Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 18th meeting of the Kirtuk County Board of Commissioners. Good to see you all here tonight. We'll start off with invocation, and I think Reverend Scott Finnicum of Mountain Zion Methodist Church is here to lead us in invocation, and then pledge of allegiance. Will you all please rise?
Let us pray. "A gracious and loving God, we gather again tonight, servants of the people, to do the will of the people, and we would ask grace and wisdom be poured out upon this board of commissioners. Let their deliberations be true; let them see with wisdom into the future and do all that is good and true. We ask this in the name of the one who makes all things possible." Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Please bear with me. I have a little horse tonight. To get to a certain age, you've got to take better care of yourself than you used to. I'll learn. Approval of the agenda. We have a couple of changes we want to make to the agenda tonight. I think on the new business, Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to continue the board appointments tonight and ask for a work session of the staff and the commissioners to discuss that as early as possible, and also would like to take out approval of the Moayac Fire Department pension by back and let the county manager explain that.
We'll just remove that from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
I think you can move that wherever you would like.
I'm going to stick it just right up in the next category after number five and make it number six.
Point of clarification, was that tabled in all board appointments?
Yes, all board appointments. And we don't, let's see, we don't have anybody signed up for public comment. Now, it's not necessary that you sign up if you have something you'd like to address to the Board of Commissioners tonight. Any citizens able to do that, anything on your mind, this is the time to do it. I think everybody that's signed up is here for the public hearing, special use permit, so not hearing anyone, then we'll move on to the public hearing. First action item tonight is public hearing in action on PB 07-33, Shingle Landing, Phase Two. Request for preliminary plat, special use permit for 25 additional lots within the Shingle Landing subdivision located in Moayac along Moayac Landing Drive, Tax Map 9, Parcs 29R and 29T, Moayac Township. Anyone that wants to speak to this matter must come forward and be sworn in. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and the only testimony accepted during that public hearing will be matters on which you are deemed to be an expert of some nature. So it's not a matter of opinion, conjecture, petitions for which people are not here to be cross-examined. So if anybody wants to speak to that, please come forward and be sworn in. If anybody will place their left hand on the Bible, raise their right hand, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Woody, if you would elaborate on this case for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will elaborate briefly. As we've been through this case last month, we kind of went over the specifics. This is Phase Two. It's 24 lots. Really where we're at at this point is the developers requested to move forward with a Phase Two preliminary plat approval of the subdivision. There's some infrastructure deficiencies that exist in Phase One. There's been a lot of discussion on the timing of the improvement of those deficiencies. Two primary things that have come up have been the maintenance of the stormwater system, which is performed, which had to be and was performed in accordance with the NCD or Division of Water Quality Stormwater Management Permit. NCD did go back to the site and inspect the stormwater infrastructure for compliance, and they did provide a conditional approval. So I feel like the stormwater issues are in hand and managed. What's become the real issue is the streets, the maintenance of the streets. That includes not just the condition of the pavement, but also the condition of the drainage system associated with the streets. Kind of where we left it at last time was there was a number of things that needed to be done to the streets to bring those up to compliance. And compliance, I mean, that's in accordance with NC DOT standards. The county has received a letter from DOT indicating what improvements need to be made to the streets, so we know what they are. We've also received a plan from Hymen and Roby, which indicates the cross-sections of the grading changes that need to be made to the drainage infrastructure to make that function properly adjacent to the streets. So we kind of know the plan of action that needs to be taken, and we discussed that at the last meeting. Where we're at now is to what extent the county approves the preliminary plat for Phase Two, and whether or not those DOT streets, the changes associated with that, need to be made now or prior to the preliminary plat being approved, or if the county's going to allow some sort of bonding or performance guarantee to be put in place and allow the preliminary plat to be approved while those changes or improvements are underway. And our recommendation, which is the same one from the last meeting, technical review committee and planning staff did recommend conditional approval. There's a number of conditions in the staff analysis, but probably the primary one was that we would say if the board does approve the preliminary plat, that you add a condition that requires a performance guarantee to be posted to ensure the improvements are made to Phase One. And I would even go so far as to say that you may want to tie those improvements or make sure those improvements are actually done before the final plat can be approved for Phase Two. Because remember, this is a preliminary plat, which is just that, it's a preliminary subdivision drawing, but it does not give any authorization for homes to be built or lots to be platted. There's another step that must occur. So again, staff's recommendation is to allow conditional approval, provided the approval contains conditions that require the infrastructure to be brought up to standard according to DOT requirements, and that bringing up to standard is tied to, that must occur before Phase Two is actually platted. And with that, I'll answer any questions you have. Hopefully I gave a brief summary of kind of where we're at and what staff's position is to this point.
Any questions for Mr. Woody?
I would only, I ask staff to go up and check and see what work had been done since we had this issue before. And I would just, Mr. Woody, if you would, did staff go up and look at that?
We did. We, myself and the county engineer rode through the subdivision on Friday of last week. During that time, it appeared that there were some issues with sidewalk, you know, the sidewalks being damaged and in need of repair. It appeared like a number of areas of sidewalk had been replaced or repaired. You could kind of see the freshener of concrete that indicated the changes or new concrete had been poured. At that time, it appeared like there was a grading, not appeared, there was. There was a grading contractor on site who was beginning to correct some of the deficiencies in the drainage system, or they were grading out some of the ditches. So we saw that work underway as of Friday. Did not see any improvements or anything done to the roads themselves yet, but the ditch work was underway.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, it might behoove us to have Mr. Woody explain what preliminary plat approval is and what rights it gives the developer.
Generally, what preliminary plat approval is, is a preliminary plat is the county issuing a permit and authorizing the developer to begin infrastructure improvement. So generally, ordinarily in the subdivision, we approve a preliminary plat. The developer then goes out and puts in all the infrastructure, that'd be roads, stormwater, open space amenities, whatever is required. This Phase Two is kind of unique because, for the most part, the infrastructure for Phase Two is already there because they built the road in combination with Phase One. But ordinarily, when the infrastructure is then completed, the developer then must come back to the county. At that point, the county will go out, inspect the infrastructure, make sure it is installed correctly. Then the developer can submit a final plat. The final plat being the map that's recorded in the registered deeds. So again, a preliminary plat is just that. It's a preliminary subdivision approval, which gives basically the developer the authorization to build infrastructure, and it gives him a vested right, or what's called a zoning vested right. The county's kind of honoring our lot sizes and our zoning ordinance while he puts in the, or he or she puts in the infrastructure. So again, it's just like it says, it's a preliminary approval.
But he has to get final plat approval before he can ever sell a lot or anything.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Woody? Anybody here to speak for the applicant?
My name's Don Williams. I'm one of the developers, and just trying to give you an update as to what's going on. We have done all the sidewalks, and when I say all the sidewalks, I'm sure that we're going to damage a few because we've got some large equipment out there. And Mr. Woody said something about roadside ditches, but no work being done on the road itself. We're not going to work on the actual asphalt until the large equipment is, makes the round on the ditches because it's going to damage the asphalt. So we've made some progress. Certainly, I'd like to be a little further along, but in the end, you know, it's going to be done, and we're almost there. Kind of goes back to communication. What I've tried to do is hold some meetings with the people in Shingle Landing to inform them as to what's going on. Progress rather slow, but at least to let them know kind of where we stand and where we're going, and we can get there together. So it's going to take a little bit more time, but I've kind of been asked to get a road bond, but not formally asked to get a road bond, and I've made an application, have copies of it here, that it has been applied for. Now, years ago, a road bond might have taken 24 to 48 hours. Again, it's one of those things, the times we're in right now, it might take five to seven days, a little longer. I don't know, but the application's been done. It's in the right hands, and as soon as we get something back on that, we'll let you know. But again, I was here June 4th, and basically, I have a letter of commitment which says preliminary plat approval is given. I have the funds available to keep moving forward. Again, this is out of pocket right now. I would like to get preliminary plat and be able to recoup the money that I'm putting into it and get the job done as quickly as possible. I think it's in everybody's best interest to go ahead and get the work done as quickly as possible. It's in my best interest, and I know it'll make everybody happy once the work is done. And I'm going to tell you, just like I told them in the meetings, at the end of the day, I'm not going to make everybody happy. I mean, I'm going to make the majority happy, but inevitably, somebody is not going to be happy about something, and I can't do anything about that. All I can do is fix the roads, do the ditches, do the sidewalks, do the stop signs to the standard it's supposed to be, and that's it. So that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Williams?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Williams, are you still moving forward to be the single sole owner?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Old will no longer be involved?
It goes back to financing. I mean, again, which you have to take into consideration, banking is tough right now, and it's a little unusual to have this current loan in place, ready to close on that. We can't, we've got to do one thing before we can do another. I need preliminary plat approval at this time to fund what I'm doing right now.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, we heard from the applicant, Mr. Woody Hope, in the public hearing. First people I have signed up are Ron and Luanne Melton. Come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Ron Melton. I live at 218 Moayac Landing Drive in the Shingle Landing subdivision. I was at the last Commissioners' meeting, attended several of those. I'm one of the residents who was here to throw rocks at Mr. Williams and Mr. Old for not doing what they said they were going to do. They've been talking a lot about what they were going to do, so they were long on talk and short on action. I'm glad to say that now, at least for right now, Mr. Williams is long on action, short on talk. So he's doing what he said he's going to do. If he said he's going to get the bond removal, or bond approval, then I think he's going to do it because everything else so far, he said he was going to do. Weather permitting, he's done. So based on the recommendations from the planning director, with those limitations, I'd like you to consider giving him preliminary plat approval so he can move on. I think it's the right thing to do, based on what he said and actually what he's actually executed so far. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. Any questions for Mr. Melton? Anyone? Kevin and Amanda Andrews.
Hey, how you doing? Kevin Andrews, 200 Creekview Circle, Shingle Landing. I too have also witnessed Mr. Williams out there himself, hanging stop signs, out there digging the ditches and doing what he said he's going to do, and I would like you all to let him proceed with Phase Two. Thank you.
More questions for Mr. Andrews?
Joanna Gomenis.
My name is Joanne Gomenis. I live at 124 Applewood Drive, Shingle Landing. In regards to the preliminary plat, Phase Two approval, I will give my support to Mr. Don Williams under the conditions that he have a bond or some kind of financing in place. Don Williams notify the residents with a letter of their mail, illegal mailboxes that DOT will not accept the roads until they are removed, that the work on our road, sidewalks, swells, stop signs are completed and accepted by DOT prior to the recording of the final plat. It is incumbent that Mr. Williams enforce and support the residents of Shingle Landing on the rules of the covenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomenis.
Mary Waller.
I'm Mary Waller. I live at 118 Creekside Drive in Shingle Landing. I agree with Ms. Gomenis, but with stipulations, and they're mostly the same as she. Everything must be done before final approval. Give them up to 90 days to get the work done. That allows for bad weather and everything. And if they do not comply, I have to add that we would revoke the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Roxanne Crocker.
My name is Roxanne Crocker. My husband and I live at 134 Applewood Drive in Shingle Landing. We wanted to let you know, which you've already heard, that the sidewalks have been completely repaired, the work on the ditches is currently in progress, and we are very pleased with the work that Don Williams has done in our neighborhood. He's done more in the last few weeks than we've seen in the last few years. So we're very pleased. He has proved that he's willing to do the work needed in Phase One. We'd like to have him get a performance bond posted for the purpose of fixing the roads with a reasonable time limit. With this in place, we're confident that all the work in Phase One will be completed, and we would like to see the preliminary plat for Phase Two approved. Your support in this matter has been crucial to our development, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crocker. Ron Rose.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ron Rose. I have an office in Moayac, Moayac Commons Drive, in the real estate business, and as all of you all know, we're having a tough time right now. Construction's very important to our economy as well as real estate sales. We hope you'll approve this preliminary plat so Mr. Williams can move forward and we can get some more lots online. There is right now a fairly shortage of lots and new homes, and hopefully we can get the business going again. I've seen other developments that Mr. Williams has done, been very pleased with them. He's done what he's always said he's going to do, and I think everybody's happy with them. I just hope you all go ahead and approve it so we can get moving on and get some more lots available.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Paul Garrett.
Yes, my name's Paul Garrett. I live at 552 South Mills Road in Moayac. Been there a long, long time. I'm in support of Phase Two of the Shingle Landing development, so if you could approve it, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. And last, Valerie Bowling.
I'm Valerie Bowling, 106 Creekside Drive. Obviously, Kirtuk County wants to continue to grow. Developers need to become familiar with the rules and laws regarding HOAs and the neighborhoods they develop. Developers can no longer assume that they can continue to operate and manipulate as they have in past years. We ask for your assistance as our elected officials to ensure that we are given what was promised to us in writing when we bought our homes in Shingle Landing. Let's make right what is incomplete before moving forward with further development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowling. That's all had signed up to speak. Is anyone else here that would like to address this matter?
Please, sir.
Ms. Morrison, certainly.
Good evening. My name is John Morrison. I'm attorney with Twyford Law Firm here in Moayac. I represent Mr. Williams and CTX. I've spoken about this, and I'm late to the game, but I've spoken about this with Mr. Woody. I think you understand what's going on. You remember that wonderful novel and movie Catch 22 years ago? If you've never read or seen the movie, I recommend it. It was about bomber pilots in World War II flying out of Italy over Germany. And if you flew 22 missions, you would statistically be dead. I mean, you just couldn't fly, you know? Anybody that got 22, your chances of living any longer were nonexistent. So the pilots were being required to fly after 22 missions, and they discovered that if they could be determined mentally ill or shell-shocked, they could be relieved. But the problem was, the doctor said, well, yeah, you're crazy if you fly past 22 missions, but if you apply for mental illness because you've flown 22 missions, that shows you're healthy because you know if you keep going, you'll die. So the Catch 22. This is Catch 22. There have been some things in the past that were not taken care of, that the developers tried to take care of, although I would have to say it's in another phase that was approved, and that's somewhat water over the dam. But he cannot go forward with financing unless he gets preliminary plat approval. There's not going to be the money to fix this stuff up. So there are folks, very good and sincere folks, that wanted this stopped until he got those things fixed. He can't fix them unless he can go forward. Catch 22, because he's got to get the money from the bank. I think you can sense from the folks that have taken the podium ahead of me that he has made a very good faith effort. I would also didn't come out, but I'd like you to know, there is a contract in existence right now with CNL Paving, or CNL Concrete out of Camden, to do these roads and to bring them to DOT standards. My client, we've had inclement weather, he's going as quickly as he can. He's done everything that he can do up to this point. Last thought, there was, some of the speakers talked about conditional approval or conditions on the preliminary plat that would require the roads to be accepted by DOT. I would counsel against that for this reason. It takes a long time now for DOT to get around to accepting. What you can do is require that there be an engineer to sign off, that the roads have been improved to DOT standards, and then it's just a matter of time DOT will accept them, but it's unlikely that they can accept them within the next two or three months. I'll be glad to answer any questions, if any there are. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Morrison?
Question for Mr. Woody. Realistically, for final plat approval, what day are we, I mean, how long are we looking in the future? Best-case scenario.
Do you mean as far as how long for them to get the improvements in Phase One?
Well, just a normal development timeframe, possibly.
The final plat approval process itself is 30 days, so that's the administrative process. And then other than that, it's really just a function of, now, if they were building all the infrastructure, I would say it would be some time before we'd even have the final plat submitted. I don't know that I can answer that beyond, it's a 30-day administrative process. It really depends on when they get the improvements made, developer does.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Crocker.
Mr. Woody, I would ask you, if you would, to go over the conditions that have been presented to us, that's part of y'all's recommendations, so the public will know exactly, you know, what's being done here. I'm sure they haven't had access to this.
Yeah, my suggestion and staff's suggestion would be a couple of things. There's conditions included in the staff report, but I'm going to focus on the roads and kind of the issue at hand. One is that a performance guarantee be posted to cover the cost of the improvements in Phase One. We have an estimate from CNL Contracting that was $80,000. The UDO requires that performance guarantees be cost plus 15%. That means the performance guarantee amount would need to be $92,000. Once we receive that guarantee, be it a bond or a letter of credit, obviously staff with the county attorney would make sure that's an appropriate performance guarantee, you know, we would approve it administratively. So the performance guarantee, again, I think the terms of that is to cover the improvements identified in a letter from DOT dated August 1st, 2011, and the improvements identified in a set of site plans submitted by Hymen and Roby dated April 24th, 2012. Now, what I would suggest is, again, is that the board put some sort of timeframe on that. So if the work wasn't done, we have to be able to call the performance guarantees. You need to have a 60 to 90-day timeframe for the work to be done and be completed in our recommendation. And one thing that I actually agree with is that the final plat for Phase Two not be recorded until the Phase One improvements are completed. And I tend to agree with Mr. Morrison. DOT's process of actually accepting a road is pretty long and cumbersome. Maybe this goes with Mr. Etheridge's question, because beyond just the final plat approval, we got to then schedule it and bring it to you guys to make a recommendation to DOT to accept the roads. But one thing we do do generally is when we have roads that are improved or built to a certain standard, we can then require a professional engineer to provide a report or some kind of certification that the roads do meet DOT standards, for which staff can then review that and make sure that's appropriate along with DOT's engineers. So I think the key is that we have not acceptance, but we make sure that within a certain window that we have, that the work's done, and a licensed professional engineer certifying is done up to DOT's minimum standards. That's a good check and balance.
Has Mr. Williams reviewed these?
I have discussed that with Mr. Morrison, his attorney.
Mr. Williams agrees to those conditions without reservation.
Thank you.
And I've also discussed those with some of the members of the neighborhood as well, so we've tried to make sure the information is out.
Good, thank you.
And I believe there's a requirement of DOT actually to accept the roads, that there be a certain number of habited dwellings on the road, which of course is a term uncertain. We don't know when that's going to occur, so it may be difficult to pin it to their actual approval.
Yeah, and the key, again, is just making sure we get the road up to that standard, and we can verify that.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Woody or applicant? Okay, all the public hearing people have been up to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And then, is there any motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve PB 07-33 with the findings of fact and staff. Recommendations included in the case analysis and the following conditions, and I think the conditions that Mr. Woody just stated will be followed. It's good that this has been a long process, and we've worked through it with the public. So, I'd like to make a motion for approval with the conditions being met.
Do we have a second?
Second that.
Okay. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can you have your permit? Next on the agenda is administrative reports, award contract for Kurutuck Community Park Roads and Infrastructure. I guess not. They could tell I wasn't gonna sing, so...
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. And as I was saying, next item, award contract for Kurutuck Community Park Roads and Infrastructure.
Mr. Chairman, you have in your agenda package a recommendation from staff in the engineering department for the next phase of construction out at Kurutuck Community Park. We bid out, the base bid was the construction of Maple Parkway. Not only the construction of the road, but installation of water lines and wastewater lines. Maple Parkway is the road that extends, it's an east-west road that extends from the back of the community center over to the new COA facility. We also included two alternatives in this. Alternative one was road widening at 158 in the construction of College Way, which is a north-south road. The alternate one was from 158 up to the COA building. Alternate two was from the COA building connecting back to the current Maple Park area. All three of these came in at a total price of $1.3 million. We had secured from DOT $750,000 in funding. So, we would have about over, a little over half of the project is being funded from DOT. Staff's recommendation tonight for the board to approve the bid with Barn Hill Construction in the amount of $1,368,229... 20.30 cents.
Move to accept staff's recommendation.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, the appointments we set aside, and we're moving from the consent agenda to new business, the approval of the Moayoc Fire Department pension buyback for purposes of having an explanation by Mr. Scanlon of how that works.
Yes, sir. I'll try to do my best to explain this. I believe I'm correct in saying that all of the other fire departments, that certainly the majority of them, if not all of the other fire departments, have historically been participating in a state retirement system for the volunteer fire departments. For some reason, I do not know, Moayoc Volunteer Fire Department has not been a member of that benefit program. So, they are requesting that to, they're seeking to not only join and move forward from today forward to participate in this retirement benefit, but there's an opportunity for them, for their current members, in order for them to vest, they can go back and buy time retroactively and allow the current members to get full vesting into the system. And that's what's in front of you tonight is for the volunteer fire departments. They submitted you a letter. They've identified a little over $60,000 in funds that they have available, that they would like to move forward with this, paying towards this buyback, this retroactive restatement, to allow their current members to get fully vested in this retirement fund.
Any questions?
I have one. So, in other words, they're taking it out of their budget that they already have, correct?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Scanlon, what's the vesting period? Is that consistent throughout?
To be honest with you, I don't know exactly with the fire department what there is. I know ours is five years, but I don't know what it is for this particular program.
But it's not a vesting schedule. It's just years?
It generally is years, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do you know how far back they're going? And will they pick up any members that were in service at that time?
That I do not know. I certainly can get that information and bring it back to you, but I don't know what membership was submitted in order for this calculation to be made, if that was members that had been members, or if it's just their current roster, active roster. But I certainly can get that information for you.
Any further questions? What's your pleasure?
May for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Consent agenda.
May for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioners' report. Ms. Idlin.
I would like to thank Jason Weeks. He come over to Knott's Island and met with me. We went to Carova, looked at the canal that goes up to the park. We're trying to figure out some creative ways of maybe doing something there. Also, he's met with WRC folks and got a good report on the boat ramp at Knott's Island, and I think, as well as some other projects, and I would just like to thank him for that. I had a question. I talked with Mr. Scanlon today, just to let the rest of you know. You know, we have talked for some time about a fire and EMS volunteer coordinator to help bring up the membership in the volunteer fire departments. We didn't fund anything in the budget this year for that. There's some questions as to what action we're gonna be taking on that. And I just think it's time that we decide and move forward one way or the other. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Petry.
I'd like to compliment the people of Shingle Landing. I think over the last two months, the process of being involved in your government and making a decision is clear tonight that it all came out. A yardstick of a good job is results. So, I'd like to compliment the residents of Shingle Landing for getting involved and making things happen.
Ms. Gilbert.
And Mr. Williams as well.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I wanna also echo that the folks in Shingle Landing have worked tremendously since, actually, last summer, working with this. And we're moving forward in a positive direction. And I just appreciate their patience and their input and enthusiasm. And every process is painful, but they've managed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Etheridge.
Couple of things I want to bring up. I attended the Memorial Day service out at Veterans Park. And I'd like, without objection, the staff to begin looking how we can clear that wooded area between the road and the facilities there at Veterans Park and look at expanding the use of that part by adding some picnic tables and make that area a little more amenable to public using it. I think we'd get a lot more use if we had that area cleaned up. I was approached last week by Jim Mims and Clarence Harrison about boy scout camping. And they have suggested, and I agree completely, that we contact the state about the property at the end of Swains Lane, directly across from the YMCA, about not setting up necessarily a boy scout camp, but public camping facilities that anybody in the county could utilize to, if they wanna go camping and not have to drive beaucoup miles to get there. And the third thing is, I want to resurface the idea of some type of identification sticker at our convenience sites, so that when people pull in, we research this, Ms. McQueen did, I think, about four years ago. I have been at the Shawboro site a couple of times and seen people, when they were approached about their identification, they get a little belligerent. So, it's a public safety issue. And also, you know, how much money are we leaking of taxpayers' dollars from other people in other counties utilizing our dump sites? And I'd like to see us look at that and see how we can implement it. Because, you know, some of the attendants, they shouldn't be asking people to see their driver's license or stuff like that. I mean, that puts them in a bad situation, or the possibility of a bad situation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neill.
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions for staff. The first one is, several months ago, we had a public meeting up in Moayoc to discuss, they were deciding whether they should incorporate or whether we could meet their request for services better. And it revolved somewhat around recreational opportunities and other things. And Ms. Gilbert and I separately have met with some of the people up there and discussed a, quote, "small area plan", and told them that maybe after, you know, school ended and we got into the summer season and it had, you know, that maybe the staff could start putting together a small group up there to, a diverse group, not just one with a certain liking or agenda, but a diverse group to start discussing what they would like Moayoc to look at. I know there's a lot of issues with the signage, with overgrown grass, with various other issues up there that seems like I get asked about quite often. And I'm sure Ms. Gilbert does as well, and any of the other board members. So, I'd like to know, Mr. Woody, if there's some time on your agenda you have set aside for this, or if you could go ahead and start thinking... We wanted to get past the approval of the UDO as well. I do remember why we didn't just jump into it. But if we couldn't start looking in that direction, unless the board objects, which I don't think they will, the ones that attended, or the manager objects, which I don't think he would either, 'cause he attended as well.
No, sir, I don't object.
And so, if you could just kind of...
I'm prepared to schedule something, so I'll begin to work on that.
Okay.
Like maybe an initial meeting.
My next issue goes back to the recreation in Moayoc. It's the only township, pretty much, large township in Kurutuck, that does not have a public park. We have one in Knott's Island, Carova, Lower Kurutuck, Maple. And I think that on our recreation plan, it was like five or six years out. And I would like, unless the board objects, I would like to ask the manager to start looking to see if there's not some suitable property in Moayoc where we could, in fact, start looking at a community park in Moayoc as well as we've done in the other portions of the county. Unless the board objects, I'd like to ask Mr. Scanlon to start that process as well.
May I ask a question along those lines?
Yes, sir.
The piece of property that the county owns right there in front of Shingle Landing, how big is that?
25 acres.
20, 20 acres.
20 acres, and five acres went to the boat ramp, I think.
That's correct.
But that's not really a good location.
Okay.
I think we need to find something maybe along, where it's close to some water and maybe a little bit of trees or something. It's just a nice place, if we can. If we could ask the manager to start looking in that direction, unless somebody objects.
Not, no objection, but I have got a question. If we find a suitable location, would we consider surplusing the 20 acres? What use would the county have to maintain that acreage?
The challenge, I think the 20 acres were given to us as part of the open space for that subdivision. So, I think we'll be restricted on our ability to transfer that out. But we certainly, something we can look at.
But it could be used, some type of future use, if we can't do that. But I certainly think it's probably not the best location. So...
Maybe their homeowners association would want it as open space in the vault and roll an internal park.
Well, that's an excellent piece of property up there, and because of the access to Shingle Landing.
Yeah.
And it is. I mean, it's an attractive area back there. And I'm sure the people in Shingle Landing, rightfully so, look at that as their park.
Well, right now, it's just an open piece of acreage, and I don't want us to get...
Someone has to mow it.
Hung up on that 20 acres when we're looking somewhere else, so...
Maybe the developer could swap out for, buy us a park someplace else in exchange for that.
Personally, I kinda agree with Mr. O'Neill. I think that future, we never know what the future is gonna hold. And, you know, there's been talk about schools and high schools and, you know, it depends on the growth of the county.
County facilities, you never know.
Exactly. And so, to me, we'd be wise to hold on to that.
County facilities, sometime in the future, you just never know.
That's the kind of stuff that doesn't produce tax revenue, though.
Well, that's a great area right there for kayakers to put in. It really is. I mean, for people enjoying canoeing, you know, self-propelled boats and things like that. I think it's underutilized, because most people just doesn't know it exists.
It probably would be good to work with Jason, too, and put some eyes out on the street and see what they can come up with.
That is a very good point. We need to have some signage there that shows that is a public boat ramp down at that end. That's a good point.
Only thing I have tonight are two points. Most of you, if you've been to the south end of the county, realize there's paving going on down there. And it is kind of a scary situation, so be careful, because they usually have two of the lanes closed off, and there are dump trucks coming and going. And people are trying to cross the lanes. So, I just say, anytime you're south of the Coin Jack Bridge, drive carefully. And then, the other thing is, there's new business getting ready to open down there. The Surfing Moose, which is a restaurant getting ready to open in the place that used to be the Native Vine. And say, give them maybe four or five more days, and if you're down that way, stop in. It looks like it's gonna be a lot of fun, good food. Folks are from Philadelphia, and he promises me the best Philly cheese steaks you ever had. So, I'd suggest you go try a few. I'm inclined to that. That's all I have tonight. Mr. Scanlon.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the topics on the agenda.
I'd like to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good evening.